This meeting of the Gadsden City Council now come to order and the chair calls on City Clerk Ivan Nelson for the roll call.
Councilman Harris.
Here.
Williams.
Here.
Avery.
Here.
Eccles.
Here.
Stewart.
Here.
Cannon.
Here.
Reed.
Here.
We have a quorum present, the meeting is open for business. I will ask Jeremy Ward to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Father, we praise you today for the beauty that you provided for us in the weather. God, this morning we just asked that you would bless this council with wisdom and ability to lead our city in a way that brings honor and glory to you and to it. And Lord, we just pray this morning that you put your blessings on each of them for the time that they spend. And God, we just praise you today for who you are. In thy name we pray.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chair, entertain a motion to approve the minutes on the two work sessions in the council meeting on March 6th.
So moved.
Second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
Chair, entertain a motion to ratify payment of the accounts for the week of March 2nd through the 8th and March 9th through the 15th.
So moved.
Second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Proclamations, Mayor.
Is anyone here to receive a proclamation from Idaho? I think I do have one. There's one on my table up there, but I'll go check while y'all go.
Okay, number eight, unfinished business. A is an ordinance asserting, assending to the annexation of property at 113 Murray Drive. This ordinance was presented for the first reading on March 6th. The annexation was requested by the property owner, Miss Betty F. Fortwood, who wishes to establish water service. Chair, entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance.
So moved.
Second. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Now, and this is a time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 3101 East Megan Boulevard in District 1. The last known owners are Mad Haven Lodging Corporation, Townhouse Motel Incorporated, and Cadence Bank, a successor to the bank. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of it?
Mr. President, I'm Brian Harbison with the Building Department. We started this case in August of last year. It involves the old Townhouse Motel property. And I apologize in advance if any of you have vacation plans there this summer. This property has been a problem to the community and has much negative history to it. Been no permits to improve it. And we're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance. And our plans are to remove it.
Your plans are to what, Brian? Your plans are to do what?
To remove the property.
Thank you. Just wanted to make sure that was clear.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of it?
I thought you were in favor, Ben, upstairs.
Oh, I'm keeping rather quiet about it downstairs.
Oh, okay, alright.
I didn't want to bring my family into it.
Okay, I didn't know. I knew you were in favor of it upstairs.
Oh, I'm in favor of it.
Chair, entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Number 10 is our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 417 Roseland Drive in District 2. The last known owners are Jimmy R. Battell and American General Finance Services of Alabama. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution?
No.
Please come forward to the microphone, please, sir. State your name and address for the city clerk.
Mr. I sold that property last year to Jerry Collins.
Please state your name and address to the city clerk.
Name's Jimmy R. Battell.
Address?
I didn't hear you.
What is your address?
311 Montague Drive.
Thank you, sir.
That's in Gadsden.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Okay. Well, I sold that property, owner financed, to Jerry Collins on February 19th of last year. He came here, we drew up a paper, my owner, I actually gave it, and which I did. And since then, I've had them, missed all of them. He brought this paper, had me sign it. He's the one that filled it out.
Are you saying, sir, that you sold the property, you no longer have it, you no longer own the property?
No, no, he won't. He has to, Jerry Collins owned it.
You'll be himself, right there.
And as far as American General, that must paid off in 2008.
So there's not any liens on this piece of property?
Huh?
There's not any liens on this piece of property here?
At the time, I don't know.
Did you, uh, did you get your lien from American General Finance Services?
Yeah. Here's a check where they paid them off.
Oh, yeah. Uh, Mr. President, would maybe our city attorney might want to look at that first?
Here you go.
He can make some kind of determination on it.
Here you go, Mr. Attorney.
And that also.
This probably cleared up right here for you.
I can't reach him now. This is number one.
Um, you know, the document he's giving you is just a...
Oh, okay, okay, okay. But I guess we're not...
A request, basically, to his attorney to draw up a contract of sale. Uh, it's not a deed, it didn't convey the property.
Property evidently hadn't been transferred on.
Um, this is the property that someone took a deed and recorded it purporting to give the property to the city. And the city, that was because of a criminal proceeding that was ongoing in municipal court. And the attorney got the deed and recorded it, city never accepted the property, trying to avoid prosecution.
Let me see, babe.
If you have a mortgage, you know, the record is at the probate court, what the mortgage, whether it's still in effect or not.
I never had.
Someone goes and satisfies on the record, that's a cloud on the title.
All I know is, Mr. Collins, I had a terrible time with this, with him. He did that, and then two weeks after he took possession of the property, he come to me and told me he had to buy hot water heater, you know, $300, $300, I knew better than that, the water company give you a hot water heater, you know. And so, he had, he went to the water company and had the water and air power and everything turned on. And he said, and then he was giving me all kinds of trouble, I found out that I had dealt with this foundry. Then I went down there, then he gave me a bunch of shit. So then he said this and that. So, just those folks, so I took Jerry Pondus down there on the 14th of May to look at the property and see if there was anything in matter or nothing. And he ordered Mr. Pondus and myself out of the house. He said, he said, "You have to leave. This is my house, it's all I'm paying for it, it's in my house." And so, Mr. Pondus, we left, had to leave. And, uh, he was, he was representing, he owned that house. I'm like, "Have time to get things done."
Evidently, he is the owner as far as courthouse is concerned, Roger.
Yeah, yes.
So what does he need to do? Get it transferred?
Well, if he's selling it to somebody, you need to prepare a deed in the court.
And have it no draft.
Well, that's part of preparing.
Yeah. Actually, all he has is just a piece of paper, somebody's written an agreement on it. Nobody never took anywhere, nobody took any action on it. And since you have paid the house off, the house is in your name, but it hadn't been changed at the courthouse with American General on there, that company on there.
Huh?
It's still showing a lien hold, a mortgage company holding your property, but that's not true, you paid it off.
I done did, I went to the courthouse, I went to American City Finance where I made this note, equity on my house to pay off these bills, okay? Nobody ever told me, nothing, I never seen nothing. I paid $11,443 on, but I started debts. Now, here's your checks for all of them. I've never seen one of them. That check that's set right there, I never seen it, they signed it for me. And, uh, that's it. But they, uh, all of this stuff here is American General, it's paid off. I went to the courthouse, I went to the lien, where they renewed the deed, and had the lien removed. I went to City Spring Fries House, which is one that took over American General, and they said, okay, so they made me have to live. And they satisfied, and so I took it up to the courthouse. Had it removed. So, I mean, it's just been a terrible mess for me.
Yes, sir.
Okay, Roger, what do we need to do?
Go through with this hearing?
What do we need to do?
Go through with this hearing?
Well, the issue is whether there's a nuisance at the house. That's the issue before the council, not who owns the property. And that's for you to determine whether there's a nuisance that needs to be abated. That's the issue that's before you.
What do you mean? The fuel's set on fire. On the 16th of April, I went down there, I was at my daughter's birthday party, it was all together, the whole family was having a birthday party. And so, he called me and said, "The house on fire." We went down there, and the back room is on fire, and the fire department's there. He, Mr. Collins is running around out there telling everybody, "He just rented it." Went and scored his paper, he supposedly bought it, you know? And he was the one that called it and had, in his face, had it condemned. Not me.
Okay, I think, I think I know where we are now. The house has been burnt, it's not livable, and today, we're going to abate the nuisance on that piece of property. That's what Mr. Harbison's got before us.
Yeah, it's, you know, it's an mess.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we don't, I mean, it just, it's, it's pretty far as the house, is there, you know, I would give you a very...
We thank you.
...to the bad, you know?
I wonder if it had insurance.
It says on that statement, "I sold him the house for $8,500."
Well, that's not... We're going to abate the nuisance as it is now, and you need to get your deed and everything straightened out on who owns the house at the courthouse.
Yeah, already have, I had, I mean...
Well, it doesn't show that up there, he wouldn't be saying you were the owner. So you need to go up there and straighten it out.
What?
Bob, it appears that he can't get it straightened out himself. Wouldn't we not be fruitful to him in saying, "Please go get you some legal advice?"
That's what I see.
Lawyer, and go from there.
Part of the problem is the legal advice.
I know exactly what it is, but he can't straighten it out. All we can do is abate the property, and then he needs legal advice on what you needed to do.
I wonder if...
Well, did you hear what he said, Ben?
Yeah, Ben, yeah.
I wonder if...
You don't get it here.
Did you have insurance? Did you have insurance on the house? Mr. Batel? Have insurance? Johnny? Did you have insurance on the piece of property?
No, I wouldn't try to put insurance on that property. And he had done something to wear by insurance, they said he couldn't wear insurance.
Okay, okay.
I think, I think what he did, I found out he was this foundry, and he, he did this before, where he has his house or something, and he had insurance, insured, he collected the insurance out of there. I think that's what he was doing there.
Okay.
I don't know.
Okay.
I would suggest you get an attorney and see if you can straighten it out.
That's all you can do.
What we're going to do now, I think, is abate the nuisance. You need to get an attorney.
If you...
A real attorney.
Yeah.
Yeah, not none of us, seven or eight guys, sitting up here.
Well, I'm not asking, I'm just saying something, I'm getting ready to leave. You should go ahead and ask.
Talking another hour.
No, finish up. This is Brian.
Where are we? Been an hour.
We need to hear from Brian.
Anybody for, anybody else for?
Anybody else in favor of it?
Mr. President, we started this case in April of last year. It is partially burned, there've been no improvements to it, nor are there any permits as of today to improve. We're asking for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
Brian, before you sit down, I got a question for you. Because, I mean, the gentleman just left, but out of all that confusion, if I look down on the agenda, we got a quick claim deed that the city is deeding the property back to him. So in other words, right now, the city owns the property.
Correct.
How did we get that?
How did we get it?
Yeah, how did we get it?
He, he had an attorney quitclaim the deed to us without our knowledge. We would have had to have acted on that and received it, but we didn't have that opportunity. But it was recorded, and now, we're in the process of giving that back.
He needs to go see, he needs to go see another attorney to get whoever that attorney was who messed him up on this deal. Sounds like.
That would be good advice.
That's what I would think, yeah.
That's what I said, get a real attorney.
Oh, you said get a real attorney, okay.
Okay. Anybody else who would like to speak in favor of it? Chair, entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion?
I just want to make it clear that with, as of right now, we're tearing down city property. I just want to make that clear, because he do not own the property, as of right now.
In about 10 minutes, it won't be in the case. That's right, it'll be back in his hands.
Not necessarily. If he don't accept it back, we still own it. So either way it go. Am I right, Rogers?
Well, probably don't need to comment any further.
Okay, all right, we'll leave it alone then.
I said, my professional liability doesn't cover what we've been talking about.
Okay.
Is there any other discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 424 North 24th Street in District 6. The last known owner is Tommy Wise. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution?
I think Brian.
Anybody who would like to speak in favor?
No, Brian won't speak. Mr. President, there have been some recent improvements to this property, and we're asking today that this case be tabled for 30 days.
Okay, senior district.
I make a motion that we table this item out here for 30 days, please.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to table the resolution for 30 days, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to table for 30 days.
Our final public hearings today are six resolutions assessing nuisance abatement liens against property. These are for grass cutting work that has been, already been performed. I'm going to read the addresses and names, and anyone who wishes to speak about any of these may come forward. Number 12 is 919 South Line Avenue in District 2, $151 Murray Owens. 938 Avenue A in District 3, $211 State of Alabama Property Tax Division and Alonzo Wilson. 908 South 15th Street in District 5, $481 Irene F. Latson. 1109 Foster Avenue in District 5, $676 State of Alabama Property Tax Division and John and Lily Higgins. 2202 Sansom Avenue in District 6, $271 State of Alabama Property Tax Division and Willie C. and Willie M. Geddes. 38 Cabot Avenue in District 7, $256 Elaine Mears. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to any of these resolutions? Anyone who would like to speak in favor of it? Chair, entertain a motion to adopt all six resolutions.
So moved.
Second. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the six resolutions, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
18 is an ordinance authorizing quick claim deed. Property at 417 Roseland Drive in District 2 was deeded to the city by Jimmy L. Battell without the consent of the city council and mayor. The ordinance will authorize a deed relinquished in the city's interest. It has been presented today for the first reading, the council will vote on it next week.
Mr. President, at this time, I'd ask for unanimous consent to consider.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the ordinance today, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Second. Any discussion?
We're giving it back to them. Well, think about that. I might be wrong, Roger, you can tell me. If we do that, then we're going to have a lien on the property, we're going to be cutting, and we don't own it, so we might as well just take it, we're going to have to cut it anyway. If we want to sell it, it'll be clear, is that right, Roger?
Well, we got a questionable title, I guess.
Well, I know, but that's where you come in, you can straighten that out.
That's why he gets paid the big bucks.
Yeah, we said, consult a lawyer. I'm just saying, you know, if we get a lien on it, we'd have to go through all that foreclosed and all, and you might want to table this to he can check into it a little bit, for real.
That makes sense.
Is there any risk in the interim relative to the city being the owner of the property?
Well, you're sort of encouraging the habits of the lawyer to deal with these things and record deeds in cities' names, without cities accepting of the property. So, I mean, from that standpoint, it's probably not advised.
We just give it to the attorney that did that.
Well, that's what I would do.
Seen him a bill. No, I'm just saying, we're going to end up with a lien, and we're cutting it, we don't own it. If we own it, we just need to sort of think about that a little bit, I would say.
We might be doing that regardless of what we do.
Maybe.
Or whether something happens, if somebody happens to steal that property and hurts themselves.
You incur the liability.
Well, it's, it's going to be torn down regardless. House going to demolish regardless, but whatever, I'm just throwing that out.
You want to go throw that and table it?
It's also, I mean, not on the tax roads too, since it was reported, it took off, so nobody paid taxes on this this last year.
Well, if we abate the nuisance, we'll put a lien against it, and eventually, if somebody ever sells the property, whoever finally winds up owning it, we'll get our money, so. I wouldn't hold my breath waiting on that to happen. I was just wanting him to check it a little further.
Well, it's the first reading, Mayor, why don't we just let it go with that?
We just, we just...
That's right. Can we break all that?
Well, we just vote no, and...
Yeah.
Well, he can just withdraw. He can get back with us next week, say what it looks like.
Need some time, look at it.
But I'm still concerned about what can happen in the interim. Before I withdraw the motion, I'd like to understand better what can happen in the interim.
I think you brought up a good point there, that we'll be liable for the, for the, anybody that's hurt on that property, if the city owns it, we'll be liable for it, so maybe we ought to get it out of our name.
It's not insured, right?
Yeah.
It's not covered by insurance.
I think we ought to go ahead and get the abatement of nuisance.
But we've already voted.
We've already done that.
Go ahead, go ahead, Mr. Batel. Now, it is whether it's... Deeded back to him.
Roger, you going to give us any advice on what we ought to do?
Yeah, he ain't going to give us nothing, that was his advice.
I don't know, there's a choice there, it's whether you wish to keep it in the city's name, you can do that, and we'll move ahead and...
His advice was he wasn't going to give no advice.
Well, it sound like, it sound like I also heard, if I'm correct, that if we don't do this, then we're encouraging people to just do quick deed, you know, and give us property without us understanding or even realize that they've done it. And we could end up with some situations in the future that will be very, very, very uninviting, I should say. That's what I thought I heard, Roger.
That's what you heard. There was a motion on the floor. Call for a question?
They had a table motion, too.
Nobody, nobody, nobody made a motion today?
Yeah, we have a motion in second to adopt the ordinance, is what, what motion we have on the table.
Okay, take the vote.
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Let me, let me say this.
I'll work it out.
I like what the mayor is, I like the way he's thinking, but at this point, I don't know if I'm comfortable just retaining, retaining the title and retaining the city's interest in it, but I like the way you think.
Well, I understand what you're saying, but if he just gave it to us, whoever the attorney is, we need to get in touch with him, because we can just give it to him if he can do it that easy. I mean, you know what I'm saying? Let's just make him a deed up and mail it to him, Roger.
Well, it's tit for tat, wouldn't it?
Well, I'm just saying, you know, that's, you can't...
I agree with you.
Give somebody title and then be responsible for it, you don't even know it.
Ship it.
If you can, we'll just, we'll get rid of all of them. Let's give them all of them, 600 of them. Anyway, he's found them either way.
Is it that easy, Roger? One sided?
Not necessarily. Technically, you're supposed to accept property.
That's right.
It's supposed to have it delivered to you. I mean, it's not, it's not a real conveyance until there's been a proper delivery and acceptance of property, so even if somebody records something, it's a invalid document.
But we're behaving today as if it was a valid conveyor.
Well, the reason we're doing that is to get it back on the tax roads. It was really a question from probate office, because they can't put it back in his name until we have an instrument recorded putting it in his name.
Okay.
Okay, new business, is there any new business? You are some.
Yeah, you got to that. You just haven't got to it.
Robert got one, David got one.
Mr. President, I do have one item of new business.
Okay.
It's a resolution authorizing emergency solutions grant application and certification. I'd like to make a motion that we consider that today.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President, this is essentially us giving, authorizing application for what is synonymous with the McKinley Grants for Salvation Army, 13th Place, and the Love Center. So this obviously gives, this is a resolution granting them authorization to proceed with application for the grant funds, and I think the city serves as a recipient for those funds. funds.
Is there any other? Clark, you take the vote.
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Mr. President, I have one here, authorizing agreement with Hessler for a digital postage machine with a two-pound weighing platform. I'm not sure what the heck that is, but I'd ask for unanimous consent.
Second.
Clark, you take the vote.
Those in favor to consider the resolution today, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
I'll put that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, this goes to the Transportation Department, I'm not sure exactly what type of weighing machine it is, but it's something they need in transportation.
It's something to weigh the mail, so they know how much postage put on.
Oh, is that what it is?
Yeah, I would've said.
That's what it sounded like, but it's a platform, so I guess that's what threw me off.
Okay.
Okay, is there any other new, we had a vote.
Let's vote it out.
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Is there any other new business? Partner reports, committees, boards, so forth. We have a new police chief with us today, Chief John Crane. If any of you don't know him, you wanna make any comments, John?
Just glad to be here and enjoy working with you, on board you. Thank you.
Okay. They're marched by the mayor and the council. Ben, you wanna be first?
I could, welcome aboard, chief. Proud to have you here, yeah. I think what I wanted to say this morning probably trumps everything to let Reverend Liam Lockmiller know that we're thinking about him and the hospital. Reverend Lockmiller is Jenny Shaver's dad. He's been through quite a hospitalization thing, and good luck there, buddy, evidently you're doing great, I think, Jenny, is there a later report on, on your dad? He's in a regular room now. Yeah. Had his ups and downs, but that'll do. I had an announcement or two on the Alabama City Historical Association. We're gonna have our grand opening this Sunday, the twenty-fifth, between two and four o'clock, and we'd like to invite everybody to come by and see what we've got in there, representing Republic Steel, just all of Alabama City, the Mill Village, MS Sansom Room, the Firefighter Room, the Mill Village, I already said, but the main focus now is the history of Alabama City, and we finally got the big marker up, Mayor, and that's really impressive. So, we would love to have everybody come by March the twenty-fifth, Sunday, between two and four o'clock. I think that's all I have now. Robert, I think you were gonna start something on the Washington trip?
Yeah.
Make a few comments there.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. President. Do wanna welcome you chief onboard, I know he'll do a good job, he's already came to pre-council day, let us know some stuff that was going on in our districts, and I do appreciate that. As Ben was talking about the Historical Society, Sunday, a man brought me a whole box, Mayor, of tags that you put on all those cotton bales that come out of the cotton, I don't know how old those things are, and that box is just crinkly, but there's probably a thousand tags in that box, probably, and that's gonna be something, I gotta take it down there with Ben in this week. And I would like to say that we have had an interesting city council meeting today. It's been different, that's all I got.
I'd certainly like to welcome Chief Crane. We're just looking forward to a long, happy honeymoon with our new chief, so we all get along and accomplish, and it's important to get along with the chief, with the council and the mayor. It's important to the city that we have a good working relationship, and we're looking forward to that. There was something brought to my attention that upset me this past week. We have quite a few neighborhood watches in our, in our city that do a good job, they get out and work hard to improve the safety and the cleanliness of their neighborhood, and we had one of them threatened by undesirable person, and that's something we're not gonna tolerate in this city. Those people get out and put themselves on the line to improve their neighborhood and to be threatened by some undesirable, it's just something not gonna happen. So, we'll, probably next week, we'll be seeing some legislation toward a remedy in that.
Very good.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Bill.
Bill, I thought you were gonna brag about all that money you got committed up in Washington.
Well, asking ain't getting.
Oh, okay, all right.
We have some high hopes, though.
Yeah, I'll give a report on it anyway. We, we had a, I think we had a great meeting in Washington on last week, meeting with our representatives, both our senators and, and, well, one senator in person, Senator Sessions, Shelby staff, and Congressman Adahoe. We, I think we got a commitment out of Senator Shelby to come up with the monies for the wildlife park. Do you feel like that, Bill, was that a commitment?
He indicated he was very interested, and he would help us, so, yeah, we're.
So, I think that was a commitment, but what I was really impressed with was the fact that our two senators in the past have not favored or supported internet sales tax, and I think Shell, well, Sessions pretty much agreed that he was gonna take a second look at it, that he sees some movement going, and I think he's more infavorable of supporting it. And then, of course, in the Wednesday morning breakfast, Shelby pretty much agreed to look at it again, too. What has happened on the internet sales tax, we've had the Chamber of Commerce nationally, amazon.com nationally, and a couple of other trades come onboard, and of course, now, some of those senators up there who say they didn't want to raise any new taxes are supporting it now. So, I felt real good about that, and I understand that the transportation bill, and I hadn't had a chance to look, I had some speaking engagements over the weekend, I know they were supposed to vote on it, maybe on Thursday, Friday, but I'm not sure if they did or not, but I do know that both senators committed to supporting the new transportation bill. There's gonna be quite a bit of additional funding coming down to states and municipalities, counties and municipalities for resurfacing, so we're looking forward to that. I think all in all, the trip to Washington was very, very fruitful, and again, like I said, if we can get the Boardwalk monies, then I think that would pretty much be the coup de grace, and that would take care of everything that we tried to accomplish there in Washington. So, and that's all I have.
You might wanna just talk, and maybe Billy will do that on the section one away loan.
I will.
Yeah.
Yeah, Billy can.
Be sure and say something about that, because they were very receptive to CDBG.
Yeah.
Yeah, I forgot about that.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I do wanna, you know, I wanna thank Councilman Stewart for continuing to be persistent with that, he approached that same issue last year, got a similar commitment, but not from, from Mr. Sessions personally, and this year, we've got that personal commitment, so anxious to see that follow through this time and excited about that. The, we would like to also echo Ben's sentiment for our new police chief, do wanna welcome you and thank you for the report upstairs, that was meaningful, and look to continue to work with you going forward and having a fruitful relationship with you going forward, so, good luck to you. Thank the council, you know, and I say this often, and I'll repeat it, our council does a pretty good job, even when we don't agree, of managing through difficult issues, you know, and as Councilman Cannon alluded to earlier, we had some, an interesting meeting today, some challenges, but all in all, I think we do a very good job of managing through it. I don't like any of them, but, but we, but we, but we manage through it, and we do a good job of doing that, so I always wanna encourage the council when that happens. I was made aware, well, and before I get too far away from that, I do wanna encourage family members, in particular, those who have elderly family members who are being called on to try to manage through some of the more complicated business items, whether it be relative to real property, financial issues, whatever, please step up to the plate, young and middle-aged family members, and support them as they manage through these. These are some very complicated issues. Much of what we saw today kind of speaks to that, you've got elderly family members that are having to manage some of these very complicated issues, and they need some of our younger family members to step up to the plate and be responsible. You often hear me say that the area where things tend to break down is where we're called on to be responsible, and let's not let that be the case, let's step up and be responsible and support them. I was made aware that this month, I think, is Sickle Cell Awareness Month, and I know Councilman Harris typically speaks to the local events that we have, so I won't preempt that any, but, but I'll try to get more information and just make sure that we are raising the awareness relative to sickle cell awareness. And the final thing I have is the mental health budgetary issues that at some level will be passed down to local municipalities. I think there were some confusing reports in the news, in the media earlier in last week, it may have been late last week, actually, where the governor was quoted as saying that he's putting a halt to, where he was quoted as saying he's putting a halt to the whole process of pushing back to municipalities, some of the patient, some of the patient volume. I think what's important to note is that that's not gonna change. I think what the government halted was the construction in Tuscaloosa relative to Bryce Hospital, I believe, but there was no halt in terms of the, in terms of the impact that we're gonna have to municipalities, so cities are gonna have to receive, and in particular, some of the group homes and local hospitals are gonna have to be prepared to try to receive some of that patient volume. So, again, we're continuing to kind of stay in communication with the subject matter experts as it relates to that, to make sure that we're prepared and game planning and being strategical about how we get ready for that as a city, so, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. President. Derek, I think, you know, on the mental health issue, you know, the governor is right in that, you're right in that construction, but I do believe that this timeframe that the mental health that the commissioner had put in place is not gonna work, I don't think they're gonna be able to do it as rapidly as they had planned on doing it, so that it will involve a little more time for her to get to the point to where she wants to get with placement of people, you know, into the communities, which, you know, as far as we're concerned, is a better solution for those people who are desirous or who have need for those services. But rest assured, it is coming. In addition to that, while we're talking about the state, you know, your governor has issued a ten, a little better than ten percent reduction, you know, for the remainder of fiscal year, and that's, that's a lot of money, that's twenty percent really, basically, on an annual basis. So, you can look for some services to be cut from the state, there's no way you, they're gonna get around it. And when I see that, I think about the city of Gaston, how we have done with our services here in Gaston. With everything that's happened, and when you go to a meeting like we just attended in Washington DC, and you talk to a lot of cities, and you, or even Alabama League of Municipalities, where they are cutting services because of lack of revenue, they're laying off people, and they're in disastrous mode. Your city, city of Gaston, has been very conscious of your taxes and the monies that you and your services, and you haven't survived, you haven't had to encounter in the cutbacks. Please be aware of that, and we will continue to do that. Also, I'd like to thank the chief, thank the chief for being here today, welcome to officially, I guess, the first, first council meeting that we've had. I will say this, that when we have our district meeting, April sixteenth, the chief will be our guest there, and I'm giving you plenty of notice, so that the people in District One and the city of Gaston that want to attend this meeting come out, because this chief is gonna be there, and this is the time for you to show him your concerns and for him to understand the standing, you know, and how the community feels, and the community can understand what needed from them, from the city, from the police chief. So, I'm telling, this is fair, you know, fair notice, April sixteenth, we will have another district meeting in District One at East Gaston Community Center, and the chief will be there. The other thing that, you know, the trip to Washington was a good trip, we went to see all our representatives, and we came back more encouraged, I guess, this year than we did last time we talked to them. Had a much better feeling that they are recipient, that they do receive the concerns that we have, and one of the main things that, that National League of Cities is concerned about and pushing with Congress is CDBG funds. You know, we had a cut in them this year, you know, you can anticipate another cut, but they understand now better than they ever have before how important those funds are to us for infrastructure, for our neighborhoods, for street paving, and really in creating jobs, job opportunities in our cities. So, even though we can't anticipate that there won't be any cuts, they do understand that this is a program that works for the city and that the cities benefit from it, and that, and that they should continue that program without cuts now. Whether it happens or not is a different story, like Bill said, asking ain't getting. Asking ain't getting. And we also, the transportation bill, if I'm not mistaken, Robert, I think they passed transportation bill last week.
Okay, good.
I think they did, I thought I saw something on that, but in that transportation bill, you know, we encouraged them about the importance to Gaston, the city of Gaston, about the extension of seven fifty-nine, and I think we have several people who understand how important it is that we continue with seven fifty-nine over to the intersection of four thirty-one and two, two seventy-eight and four thirty-one. So, we're very, we're very critical about that, and we're hoping that if something positive comes out of those meetings, and I think, Ben, did I get it all? Oh, the one oh five loans, CDBG, one oh eight, I'm sorry, one oh eight loan. You know, if the CDBG funds are discontinued, we've asked them to come up with some type of formula or something so that our debt can be forgiven on any city that has outstanding balances on one oh eight loans, and we are one of those cities that has a rather substantial balance. And if they were to completely do away with CDBG funding, then someone has to pay that bill, and that's how that bill is being paid, the one oh eight loans, they're being paid out of CDBG funding. So, we've asked that if that should happen, then let there be some type of debt forgiveness or something so that the cities won't be strapped with that, because those loans were made on the contingency that we will continue to get CDBG funding to repay those loans. So, it is very critical that we do that, and we can appreciate that. We also, and I don't wanna, Robert talked about this, but internet sales is something that's gonna have to happen. We talk about generating revenue, and a lot of people, like I said, Sessions wasn't on board, but then after a couple of major corporations come on board with it, he's rethinking his position, and the logistics of having to collect their taxes and distribute them back to the states, you know, is something that they'll have to work out, you know, pass the tax, you know, and then work out, I mean, pass the tax, you know, put the tax into effect and then work out how you're gonna collect it. I said, you know, establish a clearinghouse, you know, they collect all the taxes and then distribute them back out to the states based on some type of formula you have sales or whatever. But less, internet sales pretty much is going to be a thing of the future, you can, they've gotten away with all those taxes escaping us for all these years, and now, that's a way to generate revenue without putting a tax on the people, which is something that, you know, no, 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 no person wants to do, and they'll tell you vividly they don't wanna do it. But thank you, we're having some beautiful weather, you know, this is just gorgeous weather, and we're enjoying it. As an old friend of mine said, y'all go fishing, thank you.
Mayor?
Yeah, I'd just like to piggyback a little bit on what Derek was saying, I was just thinking, over the years, in real estate, I've seen people, seniors, elderly people who, somebody comes out, gives them a price on a roof job or paving a driveway, they take the money up front, never come back, and anybody who has elderly parents, friends, or seniors, or anybody they know, aunts, uncles, they need to stay in touch with them on any kind of issues as far as when they're gonna be paying somebody, 'cause they're taking advantage of a whole lot more than people realize. Also, we got the financial report from, report from last month, and we're up, I don't remember the exact numbers, but going on what Billy was saying, you know, our revenues are up some, pleasantly surprised, I felt like they'd be up a little, but, you know, we haven't had layoffs, cut services, we're still doing projects and everything, and we have. and we have a little bit of savings, so, uh, if you keep up with the other cities, uh, there's a lot of them are just completely going under, and I think as far as the money from way up the ladder, Washington down through Montgomery to here, it's probably gonna still be pretty lean for a while, so we've gotta, uh, hold on to what we're doing and, and keep trying to do the same thing. I guess, oh, one other thing, the chief, I've had a couple meetings with the chief, he's got some good ideas, and we're working on some things together, and we're certainly glad to have you here, Chief Crane, just wanna tell you that, we appreciate your comments and, and all your input in the last week or so. So, uh, you know, all, all in all, uh, we're doing, we're doing pretty good, and we're in good shape, thank you.
Bob, uh, I would like to say that, speaking of the elderly situation, that Bob and I would really appreciate any help that we can get. Can I say that, Bob, if that'd be okay?
Yeah, you, you're just a kid, though, Derek.
Oh, no, I, I appreciate any help I can get, so bring it on.
The only problem with that is, we, we try to give y'all help, but you don't listen to us. I don't know if you need a hearing aid or just tune us out, right, guys?
I know where you live, Mayor.
Mr. Mr. President, I got something I need to ask Councilman Williams, please. A while ago, he said, uh, he didn't like it, I don't know if he's referring to these people that sitting up there with him or didn't like the council meeting, I need a little clarity on that.
Before we go, if you don't please?
I thought it was pretty good, he said he didn't like the council members.
We'd have to go to, into executive session for me to clarify, so it's not.
Okay.
Kinda expanding on what Derek said about, there's so many people out there that, uh, they don't have their, like this gentleman, uh, there's mortgages on their property that hadn't been satisfied. Uh, when, and a lot of times when the elderly people die, the kids are in a turmoil because of the... Make sure you got a clean deed on your property, check on that. There's just, over and over again, I hear this, uh, situation, this nightmare where there's, there's, uh, legal confusion with the property. So it's important to, uh, check on your parents' property and make sure that they have a proper deed and all the liens have been satisfied that they should have been.
I'll entertain a motion, we adjourn.
So moved.
This meeting is adjourned.